We're going to get started on our stake meeting. Everyone, take a minute to pray.
Father be with you again. Just bless your name, Father. Appreciate what you're going to do for us. Father, we lean in and depend on you now. And you heard our prayer, you're here again. You thank you for what you're going to do. It'll be, oh, right now that you're not dead. You know these days will come. And Father, you have a plan. And we just know that it's gonna be all right. And we feel good about it. And we thank you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
A blessed life of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which you stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome you all to our meeting. Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. We have a compromise set up. The number is one nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two. Access code three two three four seven five. This is not a toll-free number. You may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. The chairperson opens the meeting for public comment. Please follow the following instructions. You wish to speak, please dial star five. Moderator will unmute your line and return to speaking. And notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person who wishes to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. The commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. With that said, did everyone get the add-on? To the agenda?
Thank you, Ruth B.
It was, uh, yeah, nine A through nine D?
Yes.
All right.
Question. In respect to nine A and the debris removal? Is the area defined as Keaton Beach canals inclusive of Cedar Island, Dark Island?
I believe that's, uh, on the list. Um, it is, let me pull out the list. And I'm gonna just, yeah, on the, on the cover sheet. So it is Estelle Beach, Deco Beach, Spring Warriors, Steen Hatchie, Keaton Beach canals. But...
Who's on the list? Both.
That's what I'm trying to define. Um, I sent them an email yesterday. I have not received an answer because Dark Island was not on that list. Cedar Island was not on that list. Um, Finn Holloway River was not on that list. So I believe...
And other areas that may have navigational hazards, you know, the impact. I mean, this is why it's walking along the whole Taylor County coast.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get some clarification on that. And also, just for the board's information while we're discussing it. They have, this particular company has asked to use a portion of the Keaton Beach roll-off site. They have assured me that they have not been able to find another site that they may lease. With a private entity, it would be a short-term lease. Um, I just need concurrence from the board that that's, that's appropriate. I don't, I don't see a problem with it. The, the way they described it to me is the trucks that remove the debris from the waterways are small. And they just need a place to stage the debris until they can put it in a larger truck. Um, they would have to, um, they would have to apply for all the permitting in order to do that. But I did want to make sure that, you know, a private citizen wasn't missing out on a lease opportunity with them. And they said they had been unsuccessful on finding a site.
Briefly, have an approval of the agenda?
I know.
Motion to approve the agenda. We have a second. Second, on a favor. What did you say? So everyone has a chance to go over your setup. Set up any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, number five. Uh, the board to consider approval of change order number one for rehabilitation work through the ship program. An approval for exceeding the cost limits for the ship local housing assistance plan for the home of James and Ida Chester is agenda by Jamie Evans, grants coordinator. If I looked over that, um, I have a couple of questions. First and foremost is what is the extra twenty percent that's added on for?
Uh, that is... I would assume that's a contingency, but I can double-check on that.
Yeah, before we vote on this, I'm gonna need, we need to know what that is. And the other thing is, uh, is this a very large house?
It does not give this square footage, but typically they are not.
Okay, because, you know, someone was questioning me about the cost of the air conditioner. Said that must be a really big house for that air conditioner to cost that much. Is there anybody that, um, that looks over this? And, 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 um, what's the deal on that?
There is. We have our consultant that we use, and then we also have our own staff. But we can, we can pull it from the agenda and then, um, if it's time-sensitive, we can, we can put it on another agenda as soon as possible.
I would like to know, is, is, is that true? That they need an air conditioner that is that big or whatever it is? It seems like the cost is exorbitant. And then the empty twenty percent, exactly what is that?
So bring on the table. Number five?
Yes.
You want to make a motion to table?
Yes, I, I made the motion that we approve the consent items with the exception of number five that will be tabled for a future meeting.
Have a motion. Second, second, on a favor. Senator Chief, you got your add-on. We're there to, uh, nine A. The board to consider approval of memorandum of agreement between the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, and Taylor County for waterway debris removal as agenda by the county administrator.
So the department has issued an executive order that allows, um, DEP to basically assume the debris removal for numerous counties, and Taylor County is one of them. That was impacted by Hurricane Adelia. This memorandum of agreement would allow the board to enter into agreement with DEP for this waterway debris removal, and they would assume the cost as well. As I stated earlier, I'm still trying to define exactly which waterways they are. Um, but I will, I will continue to work on that because I thought this list was not all inclusive as well.
Yeah, what about rivers like the Echafina and the Assala? Um, they have debris in them. Is, is that part of this, supposed to be part of this too?
That, those rivers were not on the list, only Steen Hatchet River. So I did send a question.
Okay, we need to add those then because those rivers are just equally as important.
Yes. I just got the list last night, and I sent a follow-up email today, but I have not received an answer. But I will work with them to make sure that we have everything. And I also asked if, if they would consider, um, some, some of the creeks in Taylor County that I know have debris in them and may cause a flooding issue. I have not received an answer on that because that was a concern of mine. Now, one of the areas of interest, I would say, is in this memorandum agreement. It limits it to waterways that are maintained by the county. And that may be a sticking point with, we don't maintain the Finn Holloway River. We don't maintain the Assala, um, as far as I know.
How do we maintain the canals?
Well, we have ownership of some of the canals.
But how have we maintained them?
Well, I understand what you might, yes. Well, I think we've done storm cleanup. And that may be, that may be applicable and appropriate.
As far as just, you know, picking it up. And that's true. I mean, I just feel like that all the waterways, whether we maintain them or not, they're used by the citizens.
I don't disagree. Absolutely, I don't disagree with that. And, and I have asked that question, and also some of the creeks that have debris in them. Because I'm afraid that will cause a flooding issue. I asked a question to DEP. I have not received, well, to contractor and DEP, and I have not received an answer as of yet. I've also asked them, I know that there was a question about utilizing one of the small boat ramps, the public boat ramps in Steen Hatchie. But they didn't mention any other ramps that they wish to utilize. So I'm trying to run all that down. But first and foremost, I think before we can do anything else, this memorandum of agreement needs to be signed.
Okay, so we won't, we, will we be holding up any work if we don't agree to the lease we got now?
Well, no, sir. The, the scope of work is not defined in the agreement. Um, that was in a separate email. Um, if you will approve the agreement, then I'll work out the details of the scope of work.
Yes, sir. You want to make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Motion.
Discussion.
To approve.
Can we make that motion contingent on these other waterways being added?
I don't, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend you do that because we don't want, we don't want everything resting on adding particular waterways. We want them to clean up what they'll clean up, but I'll certainly ask for the other waterways. But that, that's not part of the agreement.
I'm just concerned that if we go ahead with this, they're not gonna pay attention then to the other requests that we're gonna put in. But if we hold up this, uh, just for a period of time, that we can get some kind of answer from them hoping that they're gonna clean up the other bodies of water.
True, but then they won't be able to do anything. So it will delay the debris cleanup, which, from what I understand from, from citizens, they're concerned that we're not moving fast enough.
So how did the Steen Hatchie River get put on there and the other rivers not? How did that happen?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
Did you find out? How, how they could pick one river out of Taylor County?
Well, that's what I'm trying to work on. I, I just got this email last night, and I sent them an email today. I haven't received an answer.
You're just asking, you can't find out how that happened?
It might have been because they didn't get the floodwater done or speak of. It was just like a, a spring tide at Echafina and Assala. It was near the water.
The surge in Steen Hatchie, so I mean, there's quite a bit of damage.
I know it was Steen Hatchie, but in Assala, it was just like a spring tide.
I don't know. Even at, at Deco Beach, it just, they, that folks down there said that they just might have got a five-foot tide. It was like a big hot tide. They really didn't get it.
I'm a little concerned with the, that there may be vegetative debris in the water that needs to be picked up, and this would be the opportunity for that to happen. So I will follow, I will follow up and, and see if they can add, um, these other rivers and if they can add any of the creeks to the list while we have the opportunity. But this, again, this, the scope of work isn't defined in this memorandum of agreement. But it's up to the board if you want to approve it tonight or another time.
We just need to approve tonight and just have you maybe follow up on, you know, some of the other waterways?
Yes. So, so what I have, what I have on the list to ask them about is Dark Island, Cedar Island canals, Assala River, Echafina, and I think the Finn Holloway is, well, we need to check on. And then there's a whole list of creeks that I'm concerned with.
Word of honor. Please.
So Mr. Moody, uh, you go out on the, uh, Echafina a lot, or Assala?
Right.
You know, people, and I don't, so, uh, but I have people that tell me from time to time, especially, uh, uh, along there where Neil used, you know, from there down, you know, to the bridge, that oftentimes there's, uh, logs and trees in there. Is that, you know, Neil even tried to get...
That would be something that, that would cover. The debris they're talking about is docked holes and...
Not, not vegetative, not real.
Building materials that's got in the canal, you know, is, is what I've noticed in the past. That's what they were looking for. Dock that had pulled up and was in the canal, that would be a danger. Somebody hit it with a boat, you know.
There's all kinds of debris, yes.
There's all kinds of debris in the Finn Holloway, Echafina, and Assala. Trees, the bank erodes and the trees fall over into the river. And it takes a special permit to go to get those out. I know after the storm of the century, uh, they got a permit and cleaned out and also laid Echafina and the Finn Holloway in a, uh...
Does it specify?
What it says in the agreement, because this is the way that, that we, that the mission was centered, is that, um, we requested the state of Florida remove debris generated by Hurricane Adelia from all waterways in Taylor County, including county and municipal waterways.
So it doesn't specify, it says all debris, which could be...
Yeah, it would be debris too.
Anything, yeah.
And it said all waterways, so they didn't leave the Echafina and Assala, really?
So we might get it cleaned out then?
That's what I'm trying to do.
The Finn Holloway, they, real bad, though.
Do you specify that, I guess?
I'll email. I, I thought I said, I sent an email, um, the last night or this morning, and asked for, um, some further details and also about creeks. So...
Yeah. Yeah, I see. Do you want to... Yes, sir. I just want to point out, the state law, that all people on the water belongs to the people. That's state law. So you're covered anyway. It belongs to the people. You represent the people.
So we have a motion. And a second. For all in favor? All right, nine B. The board to consider approval of interlocal agreement between the city of Perry and Taylor County in order for Department of Transportation to remove right-of-way debris on city roads as agenda by county administrators.
So it was brought to my attention this afternoon that, as you, as you recall, per Governor DeFanis' executive orders, the right-of-way debris removal will be performed by the Florida Department of Transportation. Um, FDOT is requesting the approval of an interlocal agreement in order to extend debris removal services to the city of Perry. So because the city of Perry is within Taylor County, um, they are requesting, of course, the same, the same service. And, but FDOT will not remove any debris unless we execute this interlocal agreement.
Question, please?
Second, to approve, on a favor. All right. I see. The board to consider approval of the budget amended to the sheriff's office budget agenda by John Ketchum, who became sheriff's office manager.
I can actually see and do the same thing because it's on there twice. So what we need, what the sheriff's office is requesting is because they had too many people working overtime during the storm. Their payroll was higher, it's my understanding, it was higher by fifty-two thousand, seven, twenty-nine, fifty. And so they were right at the end of our budget. So they're requesting, um, money from, so amend their budget and give them this money from the general fund reserves. And then, of course, at the end of September thirtieth, anything they have that paper, they'll turn over like normal.
Is it back to us?
Well, they expended this amount of money. So what I'm saying is...
Overtime and what's up for during the storm?
During the storm, yes.
Okay.
And so this will be part of, you know, the, uh, reimbursements that we'll ask for through FEMA. Um, they, they track all that, and all that'll be a part of that. So hopefully, we'll get it back one day. But it's, it's so close to the end of their budget, they're afraid they're not gonna have enough money to make the next payroll if they don't have a budget amendment.
So it would, so aren't you saying then that this almost fifty-three thousand dollars would be reimbursed on FEMA?
Right. It'd be, it'd be part of the, the, it's already part of the reimbursement that we're gonna be asked for, what they tracked. They have forms they have to fill out. They felt they were stealing out during the storm. It's turned over to FEMA, so it'll be a part of that, that request that we make for them for reimbursement.
So is he short on his budget that he doesn't think he's gonna have this by October the first?
That's what, yes, that's what they're, they're asking for this amount of money. I, I don't know.
So that makes him have money to turn back in then, like he usually does, several hundred thousand dollars?
Well, I mean, I, only person I've talked to is John, and he talked like that, that they wanted to get this just in case. But if they didn't, if they ended up not getting it, then it would be, you know, give it back in that, at the end of the fiscal year on September thirtieth. But they want to have it just in case.
But they'll give it back if they, if they don't use insurance.
Yeah.
He gave money back last year.
He gave about three hundred or more thousand dollars back last year.
Why, wouldn't he do fifty-two thousand dollars like that if he done that last year?
Anyway, that's, that's, that's their request and...
Now, see, I'll request a motion for approval or...
Motion to make.
Motion in a second?
Second.
Now, are we favoring?
No. And, and that motion, we're gonna include to transfer it from the general fund reserve, so we don't, so that's part of that question. That's okay, everybody.
So we need to do D as well, or?
No, we don't need to do D. We just, it'll all be in one motion.
Have we heard anything from any other constitutional officer that had overtime, that they may need to do the same thing?
I, I don't know that they, that they would have incurred a lot of overtime. I think it was mainly, you know, the fire department, public works, sheriff's office, emergency management.
They wouldn't have been open. I know for a sheriff's department, they were out in the field a lot, probably.
Yeah, keeping it there.
All right. Move on to Kenstaf Islands, the, the ten. The board to consider...
Wait, wait, we got, do we have? Nine?
Nine. Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, two minutes. Now, I need Mr. JT Davis to discuss placing a mural on the building at Hampton Springs Park.
A little bit of pause in the news, not as bad news, we can have. Um, I was approached at school, I work at a school now, um, and they wanted to give us back to the community. And they wanted to do a mural project, and they were wondering if they could use the side of the bathrooms out there at Hampton Springs. And we came up with some different ideas of painting some postcard scenes from Hampton Springs. So we really don't have many pictures and drawings or displays of what Hampton Springs used to look like. And the kids have gotten really into it and fascinated by it. And they are requesting your approval to paint a mural on the side of bathrooms out there at Hampton Springs, so people know what the building used to look like back in its heyday. And, um, they are, um, since, I asked our teacher if there was ever any problem, like any vandalism. Uh, she said they would come back out there and fix it. So they are, are agreed to that, so if there is any trouble like that. But there's also been studies showing that there's less vandalism if there's mural artwork on the building. So there's two things for y'all. Sorry I'm finding it cold.
JT, I, when you called me about this and I told you then, I thought it was a great idea. And I still do think it's a great idea. But what I would suggest, that if the board does approve that, that, um, brings us back, uh, what you're gonna put out there?
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, and I'm sure it'll be great, just let us look at it.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes.
So, um, I'll make that motion if that's...
I'll second that motion. And now that we've got a, a tendon out there, we don't have nearly as many problems we used to have with Hampton Springs. They, they keep it straight, clean, trash, I mean, they shut the gates. It's a plus for the guarantee, man. You know that stuff.
I went out there seeing them after the storm and all, and, uh, and we appreciate y'all doing that. You know, I was on the advisory committee for that too. And, um, and anything y'all need help with that still, you know, y'all just call on us. We'll try to help y'all and, and do other things. And, and, um, we'd love to do more little projects out there. Uh, we actually had some come in. You know, we have a nineteen oh four to nineteen sixteen registered book where people find and save there. Um, and, uh, we have some famous movie stars that stayed out there at Hampton Springs, signed in the book. We had someone just go through it recently and digitized it for us. So, um, we love Taylor County and we appreciate y'all. Um, if y'all need any other things, like I say, I'll give our teacher, we'll do the work when the kids come up with a design, and we'll come back and show y'all.
That's good. All right. We have a motion in a second on the table, on a favor?
All right.
That's a good deal.
Thank y'all.
All right. Ten, Kenstaf. Board to consider approval of Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Firefighter Cancer Benefit Program as agenda by the county administrator.
Good evening, everybody. I tried to be, keep it brief. I know you've had a busy day. And I got here just in time from the fire, so. A little background, like, a couple of years back in twenty nineteen, the state passed a bill, a presumptive bill for firefighter cancer. Um, it assumes that if we get cancer, it was job-related. Um, in that, it also gives certain benefits to the firefighters, such as on initial diagnosis, the firefighters will be, will receive twenty-five thousand dollars in a lump sum along with other benefits, such as reimbursement for the medical bills that were not covered by insurance. And should they pass away, it will be assumed as a line of duty debt and carry a seventy-five thousand dollar payment. Um, hopefully, we will never need this policy. Um, but, so you know, firefighters are nine times more likely to develop cancer and fourteen times more likely to die of cancer. So, um, we're bringing this forward as an insurance policy for the board, essentially, that if we do have this, um, it won't have to come out of reserves to pay for it. Um, the price that I, that's originally included, is there something that's slightly updated from that? It's a little bit higher at twenty-four fifty-one a year. Um, we did have that as a budgeted expense for the upcoming budget. And we're just asking for approval to continue with the program.
Well, if I can just add something, um, how many years of service is required before this...
For the twenty-five thousand dollar benefit, you, it, you have to be five years of continuous service with Taylor County. So that's maybe a quarter of our firefighters. Um, so if you're under five years, it's not assumed that you, you got it on the job. The seventy-five thousand dollar payout, though, that comes from a different statute as far as the line of duty debt. So the seventy-five thousand dollar would be eligible. Um, and that is covered in the, in the, the benefits. So anybody, if they were here a year and died of cancer, they would benefit for, we would be covered for the seventy-five thousand dollars. But the firefighter would not receive the twenty-five thousand dollars. And, and I think in your package, I gave the statute itself. And if you'll see, the, the list of cancers that are covered is pretty long. Um, so there's a good chance that one of those, um, one of those types of cancer may be covered. Um, so I think it is in the best interest of the county. Go ahead and start hearing this policy.
A motion to approve, in a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
The board to discuss volunteer firefighter programs agenda by fire chief.
Okay, um, I think we kinda want to talk about a few different things going on. This is just a good board and update. So we have applied for the SAFER grant. They have started awarding, awarding the SAFER, SAFER grant. Um, we have not been awarded the grant as of yet, but we also have not received a, you have not gotten awarded yet. So we are somewhere in a scoring list that as they go down the list and they're giving out awards and they see how much money is, is left, that's kind of what we're waiting on, is to see how far up the list we are. And they're, they won't tell us where we are on the list. That's, I've tried. They won't. Um, but that's where we're at right now with the SAFER grant, is just a waiting game to see when do they stop giving awards. And some other departments may be awarded five hundred thousand dollars, and they come back and realize, you know, we can't do this program, and they may not accept the award, which is also why they only do ten to twenty awards a week. Um, so kind of wait to see what that is. So no good news there, no bad news there, we're just in a, in a hole.
How much is that SAFER grant?
I think we did three hundred, seven thousand dollars? I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
It was for the incentives, um, and included...
Well, the coordinator?
Yeah, the coordinator position and some media advertising and...
And bunker gear.
Bunker gear. There was quite a few items listed in that.
Pretty diverse program, that's what we were shooting for.
Okay.
Um, and it went back to, with trying to do the volunteer recruitment, when we talked about the different programs we could do, um, one small program by itself probably wouldn't be enough. But if we did a bunch of these programs together, hopefully, that, that would be the magic ticket. So I said that's where, where we are as far as the SAFER grant is. I would say, really, it's a take it that, hey, we're getting the money. But unfortunately, we're just, we're still waiting. Um, there's still a lot of time that they're, until they're done with that. So, um, every Friday is when they don't dump that information. And as soon as I get that email, I will let the boss leave it there. And I'm sure she'll be happy to tell y'all before I can stand here in front of a board meeting. Okay. Um, the next one would be the, the volunteer fire class that we did start. Um, we did a best-case scenario. I tried to teach this class myself. Um, we did a classroom-based format. When we started with the original orientation... When we started with the original orientation to get sign-ups and everything, we had somewhere between eight and 10 people that were, okay, I want to do this. First day of actual class, we had one person show up, and one that said, well, I'm going to come, but I know I'm going to miss the first day. Um, that one said he has a hard work schedule, he's always out of town, so he missed more classes than he ever attended. Um, I spoke to him, and he said he would really love to continue on in the online format and try to give that a chance with his schedule, but he's not going to be able to continue with the classroom format. Um, the other one firefighter that we had left, which if we had one, like we said in the past board meeting, we will run this to the end with just the one. Unfortunately, when we started getting into the physical days, it seems to be a little bit more than he was anticipating, and he has not been back since. So he's also going to different types of colleges and taking classes and stuff like that, so I think time-wise and the commitment might have been more than he was anticipating. So at this point in time, the class that we were running is now defunct, um, I'm sorry to say, and at this point, unless we have guidance from the board, I think our best interest would be to hold off on that SAFER grant, and then do this as a big rally again, once we're awarded. Get the, get the volunteer coordinator in there, do another drive for advertising and trying to give us our best-case scenario where we can advertise stipends and all the other things that we're going to do to try to bring in some people. Um, I think at this time, if we just try to rush into another class next month, we would be in the same boat we were just in.
I'm okay with, with that, if, um, now if we don't get the SAFER grant, um, I don't want to discontinue the program, I'd like to still try and still...
And I'm not recommending that we...
I understand that, but I just want to be clear that we would, um, really run a big campaign to try to get more students, but I'm okay to wait and see if we get the SAFER grant, because that should be coming along pretty soon. And then, now, when would the next cycle start?
For the awards, or for the next time we can ask for a SAFER grant?
Yeah, uh, 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 no, first, if we get, if we get the SAFER grant or whatever, we, if we don't, when is the next time, are you suggesting that we start another program? So if we get the SAFER grant, what, when do you want to start another one?
I would suggest not till the new year.
January?
That would be, I mean, that gives us a little more time, and plus, it, it'll be a little bit cooler out when we're doing hands-on stuff, it may not scare as many people away, and we can, I said, reevaluate how we're doing the program. Um, but it's, the big, the big problem is continuing to be the recruiting aspect, and, and when we started the orientation class, I was pleasantly surprised, um, to have eight, 10 people, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I was not expecting that kind of a number, I was, I was very happy, I think I called LaWanda afterwards, and I was like, this is, this is great, I wasn't expecting this. Um, but like I said, once people start seeing the time, type of commitment that's involved, and what has, and what has to be done, they realize, you know, it's, it's not, not really not what they, what they were expecting. Um, so, except that's where I, you know, I, without the stipends and everything, to try to hold them in the class, of, of something tangible, I'm worried that if we rush in, you know, even in January, just do another class, we might have similar results without something else to, to, to keep them there.
Yeah, and we, we had talked, you know, about that if they finish the course and become certified, that they would get a stop-in.
And that's where I think, once we finish, once we, let's say we don't get, we don't get the SAFER grant, worst-case scenario, then I would suggest that we consider coming up with a second program or something, and then enroll that out along with the next class, um, if the board chooses to fund that kind of program out of budget. Um, I think that would be a better chance of retaining people in the course than with, with nothing else other than...
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't want this to drop by the wayside, is to keep trying, and, and at some point, I guess, if we don't get anybody, don't have anybody, then we have to say, well, you know, we did our best, and, and it's not working, but I sure don't want to throw the towel in just yet.
No, and that's where, you know, hopefully we will still get, because the best-case scenario for us, and you know, the other one was the worst, is the best, the best-case scenario is, you know, this week I get an email from, from the federal government that says, congratulations, you've been awarded the SAFER grant, um, and then we can really get it with everything we can possibly have, and if it doesn't work then, it's not that work.
Yeah, and also, if we started in January, then the physical part of it would be before, uh, the heat sets in.
Hopefully.
And see, and, and maybe, maybe it's something to consider then, if we only do them starting in January and have that one class a year.
It is helpful, but I would also, on the other side of it, that we have fires throughout the year, so it's sometime, because even when we're in training, it's usually not as bad as the real world, so, like, the one gentleman that had the physical day, and he's like, no, this is way too much for me. I mean, I, we were in the shade doing our work on that day, um...
Well, if I didn't decide it then...
Yeah, so, I mean, so...
...get to a house and it's turned off.
Yeah, so if they, if they, you know, if it's the middle of summer and they have that first fire, they go through all that training, and then they realize, nope, I, this isn't me, um, that's also going to be counterproductive to us, so it's, there's, there's a good thing about doing it in the hottest part, is so they can really get a taste of what it is, um, but, no, not, not all of the good news, but...
I did just want to make it clear to the board that we did not budget for any volunteer firefighter incentives or stipends or anything. We were, we were waiting, or my understanding is, was that we were to wait until we knew if we were awarded this grant, so in next year's budget, there's no funding for first stipends or payments or anything like that.
No, I, I thought that when we had this discussion, that we talked about if we didn't get, if we did not get the SAFER grant, that, that we wish to cover it, that it would be in the budget.
Well, that's why I want to make sure we're clear now, we don't know if we've gotten it yet or not, so, and if I'm not mistaken, I have standards to double-check, but if we have, if we have a program that's funded, does that negate our ability to receive a grant award?
And I looked into it, and it's incredibly great. There are certain programs that they are very, very specific that know, um, there is a gray area in there that says that it will cover a stipend program, um, it has to be within the performance period from after the award date, um, it has a gray area there saying, well, if we're funding it beforehand, and then only after the performance, that we're only asking them to fund it, it's incredibly great, and living in that gray area, I would, I would recommend to err on the side of caution and assume that it is not, like, I would hate for us to do anything that would have a...
I see, I, I understand, but we've got plenty of money.
We have a whole fund reserve.
If it comes up, then we can fund it out of the general fund, because we're very healthy.
Well, we cannot fund it out of the general fund.
Whatever funding comes out of MSTU or whatever, we've got plenty of money, so we can, we can fund that, no more than it costs.
So then when we receive notification of if we've been awarded the grant or not, then we can come back to the board, and then the board, y'all can decide what program you wish to fund, because I think what we brought to the board previously had an annual cost of about, was it about $30,000?
Without, without the volunteer coordinator position, that was just a stipend.
That was just a stipend, that was a stipend per response, and the, um...
And for what, if we're trying to go into a lot of depth there, I would probably ask that we get at least a part-time coordinator if we don't get funded, um, just because there's a lot of added trying to get recruitment, if, you know, if we wanted to start a cadet program, you know, we need some, somebody, I mean, I'm not saying I'm capable of doing these things, but it starts to get beyond, how far can your fire chief stretch left, right?
That's, that's part of the belief, that you are so busy every day that you don't have time to help get your volunteer fire department, and maybe you do, I don't, I'm not out there with you, but...
Continuing to manage, and like I said, between the volunteer classes, starting a cadet program, you know, managing the stipend programs, I'm, I'm just saying, when we would get to that point, I might ask, you know, that we would consider a volunteer coordinator to, it would probably go better, is what I'm saying.
I'm also putting on more staff, I think we need to work from within, but let's cross that bridge when we get there, um, but I know that we have told these volunteer firefighters that we have now that we were going to give them a stop-in, and they have worked hard for many years, and like I said before, they've got up from their dinner table, I know I was at a, a, a meeting last week on the elderly affairs, and during that meeting, uh, in Shady Grove, Norma had to jump up two times and leave, as soon as that, that thing went off, I mean, she jumped up and ran out, and I know she does that during the middle of the night too, and any other, any other volunteer firefighter, so I, I don't, I, I think, I still think they deserve a little something for what they give to us.
So just to be clear, we'll come back to the board when we receive notification on the SAFER grant, and at that time, if we do not receive the SAFER grant, we'll bring a program to the board and ask to amend the budget to include that, is that...
That's all I'm looking for. Go ahead.
Okay.
County Minister, uh, please, uh, the county minister to discuss informational items.
I just wanted to update the board, since our noon meeting, I did reach out to the White House and back out to the governor's office, um, to, to make them aware of the closure, the no-closure, and I will be providing some financial impact information just as soon as I can get my hands on it. But I, well, I had, I had already reached out to the governor's office, but I did reach out to the White House today, and I will, I will keep you all informed.
Would you, um, I would like for you to try your very best, or someone, to get the president and the governor to, especially starting with the governor, to, uh, declare an economic emergency in Taylor County, given that we just had a devastating hurricane, we've not recovered from that, now we have this additional bomb dropped on us, and he would declare an economic, uh, uh, emergency for us, and if we could get the federal government to do that also, we are going to have to have help, you know, because we're going to have, uh, people that, you know, people have to have a home, they have to have a car, so they can go try to find another job, they have to have food and water, and they have to have electricity. So when we meet again on Thursday night, um, there's some specifics about that that, that I intend to bring up, but in the meantime, it doesn't hurt to appeal to the governor to declare this an economic, uh, 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 emergency, um, and maybe, you know, if, if he does that, well, we'll talk more about it Thursday night, but I will say that when I left this meeting this afternoon, I went straight to Laffery Park, and FEMA's out there, so I thought, well, they're probably not going to do anything, but, um, it's worth my time, so I was out there till just kind of get here, and, uh, I talked to the guy, and they only deal with natural disasters, not economic disasters, but, um, you know, he, uh, he talked for a bit long while, and so he gave me a few pointers, and I'll share that on Thursday, but they're not going to, they're not, they're not able to do anything, which is a shame, you know, there should be somebody in federal government that would, they should pass a bill that when, uh, you know, we have an, an economic disaster like this community is facing, that there, there would be some relief from that.
And, um, I just sent an email this afternoon to the White House and, and promised them more information, but I, I reiterated the compounded effect of a hurricane, and just a matter of weeks later, to learn that one of our largest employers was shuttering the, the doors on this facility, and how many, what type of impact that would have. Um, so I, I want them to understand it, it is a double blow, and it's devastating.
Right, and, you know, and I, I, I'm worried that, you know, they, like I said, the basic things that they've, they've got to have, somehow or another, they've got to have that, and, you know, I fear that people will lose their homes, uh, and, and, uh, and, and if they can't pay their taxes, we could be in real trouble, uh, next year, if we have a lot of people that don't have jobs, they cannot pay these taxes, then we'll, we'll have to make some drastic decisions at that time, but we'll float along as it is and see what happens. Hopefully that won't happen, but, um, I think it's something that we need to keep at the back of our minds.
13th, comments and concerns for the public for non-adjudged items. Please open the public. Non-adjudged items. Move on, 14th, board to make your own decision.
Does anybody know the name of the lady that stood back there today? I felt so sorry for that woman.
And I did reach out to, um, to a contact at GP, and, and his advice was to have her call HR. He was unaware of that, the action that she described, but, um, I will reach out to, I saw Don Perez speaking with her, I'll reach out and see if she happened to get her name.
It might be something that the governor, um, just, just see if there's something that the governor could do to hold this company accountable for such as that, and, 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 and that's another thing too, there should be some kind of law passed that a company cannot just cut off your insurance day one.
I don't, I, I spoke to...
I'm curious about that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I heard, I, I did offer me a, for, I just, but I did speak to some of those lawyers, they don't have that vibe that they don't have insurance. They're, they don't have the vibe, they've not been given anything that their insurance is cut off, that whenever their notification come in.
I'm wondering if it's, it was maybe a flexible spending account card or something like that.
I just...
But I don't know, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, but I, I just, I really felt sorry for her, and I'll tell you, there's going to be thousands more like her, hundreds, hundreds more, just like that lady, I'm afraid, but, you know, I've certainly the last 24, over 20, 36 hours, I know I've done a lot of calling and a lot of talking, and, you know, trying to set up this, or help these people with this, set up this task force and making contact, of course, my husband has too, because he, he has a lot of personal contacts also, but, um...
And just as an aside, now, my, my understanding is that the Department of Corrections will be at the, um, festival this weekend, and they will have a recruiting booth set up, as will some of the other agencies, and I believe there are quite a few openings with DOC, and if people would like to make that type of career change, that there may be some opportunities within the Department of Corrections where people could go to work very quickly. That, that is a career change.
I agree, I, I did reach out, and that's the same indication that I have, is that there are currently a number of openings within Corrections, not just at one facility, but, but in the region.
Like in Perry and Mayo, I don't know about Cross City, but my, my understanding was that there were possibly several hundred openings.
I had notification of that yesterday, when I was talking to a lot of people that, that, um, that, that they had a lot of job opportunities there, so we can discuss all this more, um, Thursday, Thursday evening. Um, I had a problem with the Shady Grove roll-off today, it was not open, and here we are again, we just discussed this two weeks ago, two weeks ago, and it was said, we've got checks and balances, we're going to check and make sure, so here we are again, it does happen often that, that it is not open, and I don't know what else to do. Y'all were going to get somebody to check on it, and here we are, it's a four o'clock today, as far as I know, it was still not open, and we had people there waiting with their garbage, and this, and they're, they're telling me, I've got my truck loaded down with garbage, I've, I've got to take it back home, I've got to unload it, because when I go to work tomorrow, I don't want to take it to work with me, and I don't want to leave it in my truck overnight, because animals will get in it, so how are we going to fix this?
So to recap, um... I'm sorry, did you?
Well, I just, I've just had a thought, if you have a problem opening, once you have your...
Well, I just, I've just had a thought. If you have a problem opening, why don't you have your supervisor under an opening? And man it himself, then, then maybe he'll fix the problem.
How far is it? About, about two miles or three miles?
I don't know how far it is, but the people in Shade Grove go to the Shade Grove roll-off and it's supposed to be open. And there's another one just a half a mile down the road. That's, that should be open when it's supposed to be open. Another site don't have anything to do with our inability to keep, and to have employees that will do what they're supposed to do. What are you gonna do about it?
I don't know the circumstances of what happened today.
There wasn't anybody there?
Yes, ma'am. You are correct. And from what I understood, by the time we realized we could not get ahold of this person, was not answering her phone, we don't know, I still am not clear of what's happened. We turned a truck driver around. Now, I thought he was going to be there around 3:30, but if he wasn't there at 3:30, I, I do not know why. The biggest issue, I mean, I feel like I'm stating the obvious, but at these roll-off sites, if an employee, I mean, employees are going to come to work late or not come in, that they may have. I don't know what happened with this employee today. But the problem is when they're at a site by themselves, by the time, unfortunately, we realized we can't get ahold of them, then we've got to find somebody to open that site and it does take time. And we realized at about 2:30 that we could not, because originally the line was busy, I was told. And then by the time we realized that that person was not there, then we were scrambling to find somebody to open the site.
And that's all true. That's all true. We've got them working by themselves and they don't show up. But we, we continue to have a consistent problem at one roll-off where people don't come either. They didn't realize that they're wronged schedule, or somebody in their family got sick. Now we're waiting to see what this excuse is, and there's always an excuse. But the problem is, the roll-off is not open and my constituents are sitting there in the hot sun. And so my question to you is, Luwanda, how are you gonna fix it?
I would do my best.
I, I, I wanna know, how are you gonna fix it?
You seen the website, uh, employee?
It was several months ago and we addressed that issue. But unfortunately, there have been random occurrences, I think twice in the last three weeks probably.
And before that, Father's Day, there was nobody showed up all day. That was in June. It goes on and on, but my question still remains, how are you gonna fix it? Got any ideas?
Well, we can do what we did today. We can turn truck drivers around. We can call other people to come in. But if it takes, it does sometimes take a while to get somebody to come in.
But how do you fix the problem though that it seems like that we have a group of employees that, that don't wanna do what they're supposed to do? So there has to be some kind of solution in that department. You've got a, a departmental problem and there needs to be a way to fix it.
What type of site do you have? We're not, we're not, I think what we've probably mentioned in the past was maybe, uh, having the employee check in with the supervisor or let them know.
And, and.
So obviously, they were, we leave it up to the employee to contact us. I mean, if the employee's not gonna show up to work, we're not gonna, yeah, we're just not gonna contact anyone to let them know. So maybe we have the supervisor contact us later.
They have been. I mean, so, so seven days a week, we have someone that checks on these sites to make sure that they're open. Now, the situation at Shade Grove several weeks ago wasn't that it wasn't open on time. Somebody had to leave because they had a family emergency, was my understanding. And then the next day that I was questioned about it, I was told the site was not open, that it wasn't time for the site to be open. So the employee leaving that one time is the only other incident I know in September where the site has been unmanned. And this, and sites are open generally five to seven days a week and we have nine roll-off sites. So today, the employee, the, the person who calls and checks was off on a medical appointment. And it's my understanding and he was, I know I found him on his telephone and he told me he was sitting in a medical appointment. He immediately reached out to the employee, could not get ahold of her. I got the department head involved. They called the site. They got a busy signal. And as of four o'clock, I, I don't know the rest of the story. But they turned a truck driver around to man the site until we could get somebody else there.
You need a backup person then. If you've got somebody that's supposed to be checking and they're not gonna be available today, then I can help you. You need to get a, a backup person that's gonna be the person that's gonna call and check. Uh, because you obviously can't depend on one person for different things happening. So we have to get a handle on this. And y'all, this has been going on a long time. This is not new. This is not new at all. And it just seems like we can't fix it.
I have a question. How far, how far are the two sites in Shager? Well, here it is. Here it is in Shager. How far are the two sites?
Probably ten miles.
Ten, ten miles apart. I know where they are.
Well, then how much, how far is it then?
It might be four, five. I was not ten for sure.
Whatever it says, obviously.
Ten minutes apart? I mean, is that?
I mean, it probably, probably at the most, ten minutes apart. So, I mean, I know right now we have sites open, but do we have sites this close together in other locations?
That's not part of this, what we're talking about today.
That's what I'm talking about.
But these two, these two roll-offs have been there since before I came along.
I did.
And that's the way it is. And we've got one that can't be open when it's supposed to be open. That's the issue.
I mean, is it the same one? I guess it's.
The same one every time.
Anything wrong with both having to go to the, if it can't seem to get people to, these folks to show up to work?
They, I guess they could go there if they have time, but is there anything wrong with this administrator trying to fix that problem in that department? That's what we need to be focusing on. Not telling employ, not telling citizens, oh, you can go somewhere else, just like somebody went to Carlton recently. He was told, oh, you can go somewhere else. She needs to fix it, not direct somebody somewhere else. Fix the problem.
I don't think any of us gotta take human error, they're equated.
Time and time and time again. Are you justifying what happens?
I don't have a justification for it. I don't have a justification.
I mean, whatever. I can't justify, I can't excuse, I can't make excuses. I want it on to these constituents. I have to point to her.
Yeah, I mean, if folks are not willing, if they're putting things in place for these employees to call in and let them know if they're not gonna come in, then, I mean, if they get, if they, if they fixed the problem one time and it's still the same, they replaced the person and it's still the same thing. I mean, you run them off and put another one in there.
We have a management problem.
Well, I would disagree with you that we, I mean, do we have plenty of areas in our business that we don't have a problem?
We've got a problem in Shade Grove and it doesn't seem to be able to be fixed.
So I'm not gonna point the finger at no one.
We've got more than one manager involved in this.
But anyway.
But she's the top person and she should have, you should be able to find a solution for this, Luwanda. One, if the one person is not here today that's checking, appoint somebody else as the backup. That's the only thing I'm saying. I'm just trying to fix a problem that we have in mind. I'm glad, now, y'all have problems with your roll-offs. And it's amazing to me that we've got one roll-off in this whole county that has these issues, just one. That, that, that raises a lot of questions on, in my mind.
I, I would say, um, I don't think we only have one site, you know, that sometimes the attendant has a medical emergency or, or, I mean, I've, I've had to work through some of those issues before. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's fair to say that it's just the Shade Grove. I mean, what I would say is, you know, we, I, I do think there's a way that we can navigate through this situation with folks in Shade Grove and, and come to a solution that, that keeps that site functioning. So, I mean, I'm not sure that, you know, continually stopping the trucks running is, is gonna be a long-term effect. However, if there's one, you know, that you can stop and that opens that site, I understand we're limited in our personnel, so we have to make those kind of decisions. And if that means we miss that drop with, or that truck might have been going, or delayed that from happening, I can understand that. But I think the issue in respect to personnel is, you know, that, those, those jobs are, are difficult. We understand that going into it. We understand those folks, they do run late and they do have medical issues to have to work through or they may be called by someone at their home and they have to go home for some, for something they got going on there. So, um, I, I know I've had to try to work through some of those issues and, you know, I'm glad to say I feel like we've gotten those resolved as painless as we possibly could. So I appreciate those efforts of staff. And I feel like we can probably work through those at Shade Grove. If that means we look at something a bit differently, then maybe that's something we ought to do as far as, uh, long-term approach to that site and how it's managed, something like that.
I, I can tell you that when I was in management, somebody that showed up to work, gets to work. I did. No matter if I'd already worked a long shift, I worked another shift. I stepped in and that's what management does. When you're a salaried person, you do whatever it takes to get the job done. You can't say, well, I didn't have anybody to send, or I didn't have anything to do in this, where I came from, that I didn't get it. You, you stepped up to the plate. So our citizens are paying for a roll-off and paying for a service. They don't know if this place is gonna be open or not. And it's, I get the grunt. Y'all don't get it. Our administrator doesn't get it. I'm the one that gives the calls that we're incompetent and I'm about to believe that.
I don't know how many employees you've got. How many employees you've got?
Total with part-time, full-time, seasonal, puts to a hundred, but eighty-something, eighty-something full-time.
I've been in, I've been in the workforce a long time. Every job I would have, we've had the same problem. People wouldn't come to work and you cannot hold nobody responsible for a person not who will fill in their responsibilities as, as far as they're being there. And the thing that, when we find out we got a problem and when we trying to work a problem, that we can pull someone from another place and send them there, which would be simple to do if we know it. But now, since it's isolated out there by itself, you don't know it's closed. And there's somebody called raising sand, as we call it.
I did.
I think we need to be intelligent enough to know and to tell them, look, it's not open right now, but let me see, can I work it out and try to work these things out? That's what happened and that's what you do in corporations and that's the devil where else you go. Now, Luwanda, when you get the, uh, call that, that number four is not open or number five is not open, Lord, I hope you have somebody you can pull and send there. Something to call, float it. Maybe we need to hire one.
We have, we have those people. The problem is they are not necessarily always available right that minute. And today, it was faster to ask a truck driver to turn around and open the site than to try to send somebody else. So that's what we did to get the site open. And, um, I, I presented a plan. I, I did not expect it to be toolproof. And we will continue working to try to, you know, but I, I want the board to understand we have nine sites. Many of them are open seven days a week. That's a lot of people coming and going. And occasionally, people are not going to come to work. I don't know why the person did not come to work today. We will use progressive discipline if that's what we have to do and move on to the next person. But I cannot always immediately have someone there. Sometimes it does take an hour or two to get somebody there to open the site just because of the amount of time it, we take to try to call someone and call somebody in, turn the truck around, whatever we have to do. Unfortunately, it does take a little bit of time.
Can that department manager not go and work until you get somebody there?
Of course he could, but it was faster today to send a truck driver because he was closer to the site than, than the department head was.
Well, if you'll teach me how to, uh, run it, give me some keys. I'll go open it up. I don't mind, because we don't have anybody else obviously that's gonna do it.
We need to work on that. I think somebody need to get it together, new one. You go to the. What should they?
Yeah. Now, let me tell you something. There is a call right now for another cable company to come into Taylor County and provide cable service. You get your license by and then you don't have internet nor cable for four or five days. And when you talk to the people on cable, all you'll get is an answering machine. Well, by the time you run that answering machine around your head about hour, then somebody eventually comes from Pakistan talking to you and you can't understand what they're saying. And I've had thirty calls, I know, talking about the cable companies. They call it Infinity, they call it Comcast. And I don't have no good feeling for anybody that won't do what they're supposed to do, even to them lawyers that won't do. If he doesn't fulfill his obligation. And I know we live in a world right now where most people won't fill their up, you know, thirty people won't do it. But now, when you pay $200 a month for a cable, or $150 a month for cable and, and you can't get it, uh, there's something wrong with that. And then you talk to a machine too. They used to have offices in it. Didn't move off to Tallahassee. Now, I said, you get, you fill it up. What can we do to bring another cable company in?
The franchise agreement, another cable?
The state control, we don't have a franchise agreement for cable companies. That's controlled by the state.
Well, maybe we need to tell the state, you know. I don't have a problem telling the state because you just, yeah, you gotta have cable, whether you have garbage or nothing, you know what I mean?
Some, some you say, some of the men say.
But in, in, as a whole, you know, I appreciate, that's, that's a lot of work went on in the last three weeks with this stuff. And I told you, Luwanda, I would like to see you leave some of your responsibility to your associate and get on with seeing about getting GP move forward, batch and committees when they meet. I'd like for you to know as much as they have, so we can tell the folks something. There is, now, some of this stuff goes on. We don't need to head home till they're all the time. Garbage is one of them.
We need to have somebody at the place to take care of garbage. We've heard that enough. We need to eliminate that.
If you have to say, take it four days a week for this one and three days for that one, but two people down at the same time. Instead of having those sites seven days a week, open seven days. Cut them out. Two, three days a week, four days. And let it be posted up on the, on, on, on signs.
Well, obviously, if the sites were not open seven days a week, it would limit the chance, the opportunity for the sites not to be open on time. I did not present that as a solution because I did not believe that it would be something that would be amenable to the board, though. I can certainly, we can certainly look at that.
The last time this board did that, cut it back three days a week. Our former commissioner's yard got filled up with trash overnight.
I'm not cutting services when, uh, when what we need to do is fix the problem instead of cutting services. That's not right.
Then we just talk.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
But I do know our neighbors, as in county, they open five every week. Right down the road from Kaver, five every week.
And if I said it would limit the opportunity for people being late to work or, or not going to work on time?
Well, if I had a load of garbage and went there and I was living in the county, I'm. Well, if I had a little garbage and went there and I was living in the county, I'm dropping it a gate, if you're supposed to be there. You know, and maybe, sometimes.
I would do that.
Do what?
You got some, they drop it in there.
Ain't nobody there.
That's why they do it, they tell you, they, and they don't want you putting it there.
Wow, wow.
I've worked a lot with staff, and I know LaWanda's doing everything that she can at this point.
Oh, yeah.
It, it may be something as simple as our staffing model is part-time call-in. So these folks don't really have an incentive to be here or to invest themselves within their job. And Madison County may have a lot more full-time positions for those types of positions than we do.
But, yeah. We can look at all these things.
Yeah, I've got one, um, constituent that works at Iirdoo, and I think I said that to you today. He would like full-time at Shady Grove to work Tuesday through Saturday. He's willing to take a full-time job there, I know him, he was like Hank Walker. It would be open, he would be there before time to open it, and he would be there until the last person left. So that might be something to, to consider. Now, if he leaves Iirdoo, then we're probably gonna start getting complaints about Iirdoo with people not showing up. But we can try that and see, put him on full-time.
I don't know that we're budgeted for health insurance benefits for folks all the time.
I don't know what your real budget. We can always pick up somebody when we need them in other departments all through the year, we're doing all the time.
I'm gonna have a rapid session, but I'd just like to add these things up, you do here, and she's probably putting it right. But I tell you what, the cable calls I got, the light calls I got. And I stayed on the phone at least five days, two hours of that. Every time you call, you get somebody different, and they tell you that it probably won't do you no good to call, speak to a person, they can't do no better than this machine. I said, what?
Make you feel better, though, if you call someone.
Well, yeah, I tell you what, I'm like, let them drive, it's just trucks coming out there. I don't wanna meet one of the trucks, then I would die driving. I hear that, but then that's for another day. Good.
Good for them. I just, I actually got a question in response to the FEMA sites. I know there's one at Offridge Bar and in Steen Hatchie. Were those determined by emergency management by FEMA? I mean, how was that said, and I've been asked if there was possibility that they could be in other communities like Keaton Beach or areas like that, or, or do they have to?
I don't know, I, I believe FEMA surveyed different sites, but I don't know how they do.
That was set by the assessments as far as damage in respect of how they would.
I don't know, I'll have to reach out to FEMA.
I, I mean, I just was asked that, that question, and I know where the sites are, but I didn't know how they.
I think they had to look at meeting space as well. So, um, it could be that they chose Steen Hatchie because there was not adequate meeting space at the beaches, would be my guess, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Yes, I, no, I mean, I'm, I'm grateful they're in those sites and, and getting help for those folks that are continuing to be in need. I did, a- after, I know we're scheduled to meet Thursday and had further discussed the steps with the, uh, closure of the mill. But I did wanna share, I, I was informed about the, the ongoing availabilities through corrections and a number of other, uh, potential jobs and possibilities that may incentivize folks and help them in that situation as far as corrections concerned. And then other sources were, were very forward in saying that our governor had been actively speaking and working behind the scenes. So I just wanted to put that forth, that he, he is apprised and thank you for speaking with his office and the process and seeing how things are progressing there. So I just wanted to be forward with, uh, everybody that, you know, there, there's quite a, a effort that's going on there. And certainly, we're, I think blessed to have the governor's actions and, and his commitment to seeing that process through. So just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, it's funny. When I talked with the FEMA man this afternoon, and I asked him about locations, and he said that they tried to, to give us centralized locations, uh, because I mentioned Shady Grove for instance. And they try to get where they can reach the most people.
Mass media.
So they've got one in the south end, and then they try to keep one, you know, up here that's sort of like socialized, uh, for the people. Now, one thing that I'd like to add too is that, and I can't remember her name right this second, in the long thirty-six hours, but the lady from DOE today, um, she said that yesterday, that they, under the direction of the governor, they had already started talking about Taylor County and trying to put things into place to help us. That was yesterday. I was quite impressed with, with, with that department, that they've gone ahead and told us that they started talking about us and trying to put things in place.
That was, that was there to the mill closure?
Oh, oh, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, for the mill closure, absolutely.
Talking to those people out of FEMA, I was told they have the black mold in that.
There is.
And those people out there in the canopy.
Yeah.
I think the city needs to be advised.
I, I did.
You did?
I, I, the city manager, yes.
Well, they're leaving there today, when they quit today, they will not be back at Lotters.
Where do you go?
And he said he was waiting for direction. Um, the, the problem is then, they have not had a facility, and the first guy in the hall's still been open for, um, um, as a shelter. And so it seems like to me, we could, we could find somewhere, um, I mentioned the Shady Grove Community Center, and, um, that's kind of far out, you know, for people locally here, uh, but they would really like to find something right here in locals. Uh, so there's got to be some places, and, uh, there are places if they would, um, and I don't know if they pay rent when they, when they go around, or if, if, if they get places that don't cost anything. I, I didn't get that far with him, I had to leave and come here.
I had complaints this week, uh, about the area of spraying, did y'all get any calls about the area of spraying? Beekeepers were really worried about their bees being, you know, contaminated. But I told them all that the bees are gonna go in at night and they were gonna spray at night, so they wouldn't be, you know, and I haven't heard anything up from the people, so that, the hive must be doing all right. Uh, you know, I haven't heard anything up from them. And, uh, did they finish the last night spraying? They finished, well, good, good.
I think that's what we, the spray we do all the time, um, Commissioner. I, you know, I think it's the same spray, it's just coming in a different way.
The weather, the weather would just hold them up on, you know, spraying, like they wanted to, I think it's strawberry. But they got, if they got it last, the last night, that's good. People uncover the hive at night now, they, you know.
Those people were very, very appreciative of us doing that. Had a few complaints and concerns, but overall, everybody was saying, do it, do it, start spraying.
I had complaints out of the beekeepers, they, they're doing it at night, they really, they sit their bees pretty well. Uh, about at night, and they have some spray that they do on their own, on their own property, and they, they do the spraying at night. Just, just bees don't flock to it, so to speak, so, uh.
It must not actually be, it's not hurting yet.
They come in by night, what's that? They got a lard, they can come in by night? I guess so, they wouldn't say, they do, they do bed at night.
Oh, my God.
So, you know, I just wanted to kind of just talk a little bit on the, our bee debate and, and just kind of. Our focus, it really needs to be, the mill, I mean, I can tell you the mill's gonna, it's gonna shut down. I mean, I know Earth thought today that they, uh, we're, are looking to keep the mill open, but it's, it's really anyone's business to, if, if, if you're gonna wanna shut your business down, I just don't, uh, none of us can stop. So, uh, I mean, I think as far as the mill, the mill's gonna shut down. I really do can appreciate the, the task force that's put together, that, that's gonna do everything they can to, to have someone come in and take this mill over, and that's the direction we need to take out of the community. But right now, I know our first priority, you know, just wanna reiterate, it's same as today, it needs to be those workers at that mill and doing everything we can to make sure that they are, they have all the opportunities that, that's out there to find unemployment, you know, sooner than later. You know, not to wait till the last hour, so, career forward, and if we are gonna do, something, we're gonna meet Thursdays, uh, you know, maybe the, our career, uh, source group, you know, we, maybe we get an update from those folks, um, that kind of. And that may be too, it may be too soon, I mean, there's still a lot to digest from, from, from this, uh, this announcement. And, uh, so it may be it's, maybe Tuesday is a good time in our, our workshop, you know, I think from, for your, your source group, just to see what, what kind of response they had. So, uh, but, you know, just wanna make sure we, sure that we're really focused on these, these workers, that we are able to help these folks and all avenues to find employment.
And another thing too, uh, LaWanda, if you can have some of the bankers to be here on, uh, Thursday when we meet. I think that's gonna be critical, that, that we talk with them, and we're hoping the hospital today that, you know, they're gonna put some things in place. But I'd also like to have a representative from Duke, Talcantin, the banks, um, and and, and anybody else y'all can think of that is gonna be able to help these people, because they're gonna have, uh, trouble paying their lot bills, they're gonna have trouble making their mortgages.
Their lager is gonna be, they're, they're feeling it today, I think we mentioned that. The loggers are feeling it today, because, I mean, they have not made, you know, I don't think I've heard any, you know, announcements within their businesses. I think they're just probably still trying to digest it and decide how to move forward and, you know, with their business, but loggers obviously have been cut off.
Did it know that was included in the contract or in the total job, is that?
I'm assuming it was, but I did not ask for these.
That was part of twelve hundred, possible?
I, I believe so.
I didn't know if it was just industry inside as far as the technical work or fitters or welders or guys like that, or if it was close.
One of the big scares that my husband was wondering about today, and all those customers they have from number one mill, they're probably already looking for a source. And, um, and Rainier and Jessup is been struggling, they're probably gonna be doing real well here pretty soon. And from what I can gather from talking to him and some of the other people that I've talked to in the last day, that, that's one of the biggest concerns, is you lose those customers, and once they're gone, that would be very difficult to get them back. It would say, and you say, it's months before a buyer comes in and they've lost all those customers. And then to get them back would be a very difficult process. So we, we can't move fast enough, I'm telling you, um, we've gotta move fast. We got boots on the ground, I know that.
All right, that's all I have, so, uh.
Check it out, any motion to adjourn?
Move.
Click it.
Don't forget, I need everybody to sign those. We're out, not tonight.
You just got to come by.
Sorry.
How long have you been busy?
Tell him, Commissioner.